Okay, Nick has joined us. Good morning, Nick.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Happy New Year to everyone. I haven't seen since the new year. So it's eight thirty-one. We'll get started. It's um. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectment, the town of the Cayman, January fifth. Eight thirty-one AM. This is a virtual meeting. And therefore. Anyone wishing to do it. It's also being broadcast in channel seventy-nine. First item on our agenda is the minutes of our meeting on December fifteenth. Any kind of corrections on the? Minutes Kathleen?
No.
Not here, Kim.
I would move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Second?
Second.
All favor? Okay. This is a virtual meeting, therefore, public comments will be taken only by email. Address to B O S distribution at the Cayman C T dot gov. Tucker will watch for emails and we'll read them in the course of the meeting if there are any. That brings us to item three on the agenda, coronavirus relief fund. I think this is Bill's. Bill Osman?
Um, I'll be presenting this.
Uh-huh. Linda, good morning.
Good morning. So basically, this is just a formal submission to the funds. We've actually already received these funds. But the state, I believe, was the week of Christmas informed us that, you know, we had a two-day turnaround to submit for the balance of the Corona relief funds for municipalities, which we did, and they said we could bring it to the Board of Selectmen after the fact, just to notify and to formally go through the process of submission. But we have received the funds, and essentially, this is part of the seventy-five million dollars that that flowed to the state of Connecticut for Corona relief. They've split this up in three groups. The initial phase where we were to submit all of our expenses for reimbursement through June thirtieth, which we did. As part of that process, we had about two hundred and two thousand worth of expenses that we submitted. They accepted a hundred and ninety-five thousand of that, which we submitted and got and received those funds. In total, they distributed fourteen and a half million statewide by the June thirtieth deadline. The second phase was to be expenses between July one and December thirtieth. And so what they did for the second phase was rather ask municipalities to submit individual expense for reimbursements. They just distributed the forty-five and a half million based on a formula related to population, a grand assessed grand list assessment, and that's how they distributed the balance of the forty-five and a half million. Based on that formula, our amount came to a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So you add the one ninety-five that we got for the first half of the year, plus the hundred and twenty-one thousand, which was distributed based on the formula grant. Our total reimbursement for the Corona relief was three hundred and seventeen thousand five seventy-one, which we've received both of those installments. And that's essentially how they account for sixty million of that. The balance fifteen million has been set aside for testing, primarily for schools, in getting schools back to to normal operation. And so most of that fifteen million is going to be submitted by schools and distributed that way. And so that's that's what this agenda item is. So that's how they plan on distributing the seventy-five million. But our total share of the initial sixty is three hundred and seventeen, which we've already received. But we had not brought to the Board of Selectmen just because of the timing and the quick turnaround that they that they requested us to submit these. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Linda, did we get shorted?
Uh. Yes, because the initial the initial distribution of a hundred and ninety-five was based on our actual expenses, which and and so that was, you know, you take out the five thousand or so that wasn't eligible. That was it was it was fairer to the town. The second phase was just based on the formula where we only got a hundred and twenty-one. Well, we had in the second half of the year, we had almost three, between the town and the Board of Ed, we would have almost three hundred thousand dollars of expenses that would be eligible for this piece of the of the distribution. But then the state decided that they weren't going to do that. They were just going to allocate it based on grand list and population. And so, yes, we we are not getting the full costs reimbursement reimbursed to us based on this formula. So I think the other towns that had bigger populations, less wealth, got a lot more than we did.
Talking.
Linda, are we getting anything for FEMA?
Uh, Bill is on. We actually just had correspondence with FEMA. Uh, you know, initially, we had about between the the town had three hundred and seventy thousand or so submitted to FEMA, Board of Ed, hundred and sixty-nine. They've gone back and forth and knocked a lot out. As we stand right now, the three hundred and seventy thousand on the town side has been dropped to a little over two hundred thousand. The one sixty-nine thousand on the Board of Ed side has been dropped to forty-nine thousand. And so we're at about two hundred and fifty between the town and the Board of Ed, which still hasn't been approved. That's just where we are in the process and is still being reviewed. And Bill can speak more to this, and he's been our point person. And he was just in communication with FEMA yesterday, I believe, on this. But that's where we are. Right now, we're looking at about two fifty from FEMA. If they approve what's what's there now. We are going back and forth with them. We feel like there are some items that were reduced that that shouldn't have been. And so we're still fighting to get a little bit more back. Part of the issue with with FEMA, I think, is just their lack of understanding of how state of Connecticut works. They're seeing education expenses, and they're saying that those are not municipal. And we're explaining to them that the town and the Board of Ed is is one government essentially. And therefore, we're having to explain those types of things. There were some issues about the meals programs because the way that the Board of Ed handled it, because of their setup, we use their cafeteria workers and and so forth. And so they look at that and they say, well, these aren't community meals. These are more like meals for schools. And we're explaining to them, no, these are really aren't for schools. These are communities, but we're working with the schools because they had the infrastructure to do this. And so we've been going back and forth with them on on that. So we're not yet. We're not yet done. But Bill, feel free to jump in if you have additional insight on this, but that's.
No, no, you you covered it very well. And um, I did reach out to FEMA again yesterday with a manager I'm working with directly. And some of the problems, I think you folks can understand with FEMA was this was a national emergency. And um, my my good feeling is that they had to hire so many people to cover so many municipalities throughout the country that there's a big learning curve on FEMA's end. And and I've been educating them to some of our mantra to some of the things that we've done in the past. And because we've had a I had twenty years of doing FEMA for the town. So I had twenty years of documents and showed them some history of what we've done. And and that's helped. And Linda was correct about the meals. It was a partnership, I guess you could call it, with the town and the Board of Ed. They utilize their purchasing power for buying food and their kitchens and their staff to help feed all the folks over at the squaw's apartments. There was a reported case within that community. So our health director kind of like quarantined everybody over there, and we followed the guidelines from FEMA on how to feed those folks, which they kind of later on rescinded what their original memo was on that. And I argued it. And so far, it was like we're winning that argument. They they did put that back in. What they did not put back in was again, the Board of Ed side, when they were required to feed children through the pandemic by delivering meals to their homes, lunches. FEMA said, no, that was an operating cost. And I've been arguing with them, saying, well, how do you claim that's an operating cost when we have to deliver meals now? And it's a little bit different. And they were also free reduced lunches where the offset of that was when children who purchased the lunches, they offsetted those who couldn't afford the lunches. That all went away. So the full burden of the cost was on the Board of Ed, unfortunately. We are still getting through some of this with FEMA. And that was only until June thirty. And I am currently going through documents now to file July one through December thirty-one with FEMA. So I'm trying to find out what they changed in the past couple of months now before I go through all the the documents, try to record what I need to record. And I have heard nothing yet from the state about any additional funding through the CARES relief program. There was nothing in the last from Washington. They they didn't include any state or local municipalities in the relief. So maybe by the get to maybe they'll bring something and help out the local governments. We'll see.
Oh, both London and Bill, thank you very much for this information. I just want to go back to the state one for just a second, which we're being asked to approve. I totally get that. On the three hundred and seventeen thousand, which represents the full year, and I understand half is the actual expenses and the other is by formula. I get it. It's very obviously, a hundred and sixty-nine towns you have to deal with. And I think they came up with a process that, you know, is reasonable, may not have allocated everybody's costs, but it seems to make some sense initially. For that three hundred and seventeen thousand, is there a way that we're sort of figuring out distribution between Board of Ed and the town? Or is it we're just, whatever the number is, we're just taking that in?
So all of all of these expenses were expenses from the town, on the town side, they were the general fund portion.
Okay.
And then on the Board of Ed side, they were from their portion of the operating budget that the town allocates to the Board of Ed, that ninety-some million. So all of this is actually going into the general fund.
I see.
Because the Board of Ed, they have some additional expenses from their grants and whatnot. So this full three seventeen is going to the town general fund.
Okay. And was there any part of this this Corona state fund relief that went to the Board of Ed at all?
Not through. The, yes, because they have they have a number of programs. They, you know, they have funds for ready to transportation that the state that the Board of Ed has been applying separate from these funds here. So the Board of Ed has received some funding outside of the three seventeen.
Okay, that's coronavirus related.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, thank you very much.
Linda, um, taking into consideration these these new fun funding from the state or federal government, albeit, you know, us getting shorted, as I as I referred to it earlier, what is what is the ultimate? As of today, what is the ultimate financial impact of COVID on our town collectively, Board of Ed, and the town itself in terms of of dollars? What are what are we? What are we looking at in terms of, you know, a one-time, hopefully, one-time cost that it's not reimbursed?
Well, uh, so in terms of actual expenses, last year we had, on the town side, we had a little over three hundred thousand in direct COVID expenses billed to the COVID accounts. So far this year, we have another two hundred or so thousand just year-to-date. So on the town side, we have about half a million dollars or so of direct COVID-related expenses. And then you also recall that for the Board of Ed side, in addition to some of the expenses that they've incurred, that they're submitting for reimbursement, the town also funded about a million, one point nine million. You know, we did the initial four hundred thousand and then the one point five. And so if you combine those, we're almost at, on the town side, two and a half million dollars or so in COVID expenses, separate from any expenses that the Board of Ed has incurred outside outside of this.
Now, now, part of that has been offset by grants that the school did receive. And so I'm working with the Board of Ed now on calculating those costs to redo some of that because we have to show that in our applications to both FEMA and if we do anything more to state. So this is a work in progress. We can update you, wait around here, this month, the beginning of next month, as far as where we are with FEMA, or sooner if possible, if I get all this information in, so we can have a better understanding what the impact of town is at that point. Again, FEMA's can change its rules around. So I'm waiting to hear back from them because it was interesting. I emailed sent them yesterday. Actually asked them the question about Board of Ed and everything. What are we doing? And they've yet to have back to me. So we're we're working on that.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I move we approve. Are we making an application or submission to the?
You're you're just up. You're approving our submission for the funds.
Okay, every second? With the discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Just kind of make a quick note. I don't know who's doing the minutes. Can you kind of reflect that as it's been retroactive? So that it's in the minutes, I have to submit the minutes.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, who's doing the ambulance?
I'm taking care of the ambulance, Kevin.
Tiger, morning?
Yes. Good morning. Happy New Year. Good to see everybody. So we went out to bid for a new ambulance for the ambulance corps. This is replaced at twenty-twelve rig. So we went out to bid. We actually received one bid back, but it is from our preferred bidder, Eastford Fire and Rescue Sales. They came in, excuse me, with a price of two oh seven eight sixty-four, and then they gave us Ford's government price concession of sixty-four hundred dollars for a total delivered price of two oh one four sixty-four. The specs were written by Troy Haney from the ambulance corps, and he's working with the Eastford Fire to make sure that everything is apples to apples. We are looking at a trade possibly. We have an existing SRT vehicle for the police department that is an ambulance that is nine years older than the existing than this ambulance. And we're looking at the possibility of using this trade in ambulance as their new SRT vehicle and outfitting that. The trade in value at present is fourteen thousand dollars, and I'm in discussion with Deputy Chief Federico and the ambulance corps to whether or not we want to trade in this ambulance or repurpose it for a new SRT vehicle and then trade in the SRT.
What's just, what's an SRT vehicle?
That's their special response team. It's a SWAT vehicle. Excuse me. So at present, we're just looking for the purchase of the vehicle, two oh one four sixty-four, and then the possibility of either trading or replacing the police SRT vehicle.
This was in the original budget, right?
This was, yeah, it was funded at two hundred and ten thousand dollars in the original budget.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Any questions, Nick?
No questions here.
I move we approve the request from the Emergency Medical Services Commission in the ambulance corps and the Public Works Department to enter into contract with Eastford Fire and Rescue Sales to purchase a new two thousand and twenty-two American emergency vehicle ambulance for two hundred and one thousand four sixty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, seconds. Discussion? All favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Tiger, okay, that brings us to boat high lease termination. Who's who's going to present this? Or am I presenting this?
I can try to answer some questions on this, and Kevin Tucker and myself have all been involved in this unfortunate event here. Just a little history, as you know, when the COVID hit, the theaters were ordered closed by the governor. Boat ties leases are set to expire in two thousand and twenty-two. They did have an option to extend it. They chose not to. And they closed down and they sent us a letter coming for us major on holding up on paying any rent back in with March and took effect of within April. Going forward, when they did, in fact, get the order that they could open, they can't open it. Movie industry didn't make no movies, and no one was going to go to a theater. So they were having some financial difficulties. And so many conversations that I did have with them. My understanding is that they needed to focus on their big city theaters to keep from going bankrupt. And they're looking to get out of all their smaller venues. They're still on shaky ground from my understanding. So after speaking to the town's attorney, some of the back rent that they did always, you know, it was only about twenty thousand dollars of back rent and to go to court and argue for us major and state of the world. They just didn't think the economy was there to do that for twenty thousand dollars. That being said, the agreement that we worked on and was that they would, we, as of December thirty-first, the lease was terminated. They did leave all the projector equipment, which is fairly new. Actually, it's only about four years old. There's a, and it's all high-tech stuff. They left all the projectors and all the equipment that would get their theater back up and running. And they also offered us one year to help train anybody who wanted to take over theater business there, provided it wasn't one of their competitors. So and they've been very helpful on communication, been very good lately with those folks. And and here we are. We have a theater. We're doing a work to it, and we've already interviewed one, and we have possibly another person interested and maybe would like to come talk to us. So we're hopeful that by this time, by maybe mid-summer, if things are good, Christmas, maybe, I don't know, we can have a theater back in town operating.
I would be I would be a little more optimistic than that, though. I think there is interest in operating the theater. We have to figure out what structure we put in place to allow an operator, it could be a nonprofit. But I think the my sense is most people want the movie theater to continue to operate as a movie theater before we have to turn to alternatives. And unfortunately, the movie business is what it is right now. So on the one hand, there's no immediate rush because people aren't rushing to the movies. And but on the other hand, I think based on people we've talked to, that, you know, we we're very fortunate to have a movie theater in the Cayman, unlike our neighbor, some of our neighboring towns. And so we will figure it out in terms of what's the best strategy. As far as the termination agreement, I think, you know, the the equipment they left is valuable and it enables us, we we really could start showing, opening movies tomorrow if we wanted to, but we have to figure out what really the best plan is. So I think it's a good termination agreement. I I think they've been very good to work with. It's unfortunate what happened to their business, and I think it is what it is in COVID. You have to accept a lot of lumps along the way. So.
Is this a, is this a reimbursable expense? Further our earlier discussion about COVID costs, is this with this, with the lack of rental income constitute a potential reimbursable cost?
No, they're not reimbursing us for loss revenues, unfortunately. We, that question's been asked by a lot of people, including ourselves. Loss revenue, loss of productivity also was a question that we threw out there, and the answer along the way was no.
Kevin, you mentioned not-for-profit, a potential not-for-profit model. Are there analogs elsewhere that you're aware of in Connecticut or or other states where where you have a town essentially utilizing a public-private partnership perhaps to to run a movie theater?
I don't know that we've discovered any. Tucker, you've been.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously lots of different models around the area. There's been a lot of interest from residents who've done some research for us and have sent me information over the last couple of weeks of theaters that they're aware of. So as Kevin mentioned, right now, we're just compiling all of that information, and we feel we're in the driver's seat to the extent that people are reaching out to us. So that's a good thing, and it's an opportunity in many in many ways. Right. So that's that's the, you know, the next steps will be to gather all that information and see what rises to the top. But that's a good question to to look into as well, Nick.
Great. Thank you, Tucker.
Two things. I seem to recall years ago that Fair, I think it was the town of Fairfield had a relationship with a not-for-profit. Was that right? Tiger, you might have been working with me on that a long time ago. But anyway, that's so good. Good work on that. Just on the lease termination agreement, can you just remind me, how long was this lease originally?
They had two to five-year options to continue up from twenty-two to twenty-seven, and then another five years after that, Bill?
Yeah, something, yeah, somewhere. It was it was quite, they could have renewed it and bought it up to, I think, seven more, eight more years. They they were the original, I think, I believe, their original operator when we took the theater over.
It was, yeah, there were, yeah. How long ago was that? I'm just remembering.
The last date I looked at is two thousand and eleven. I can get back down and give you.
Okay, it was a long time.
It's been a long, it's been a long time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, this, they also made clear to us as part of the termination notice that they were leaving at the end of December, regardless of whether we entered into an agreement. So I think on balance, getting the equipment, getting their cooperation, getting their willingness to help us get a movie operation up and running in the next year has all been beneficial. So I think we don't have to actually approve the the termination agreement, but I think it's, it makes a lot of sense for us.
Tiger, we still have, we still have issues with the building itself, though, right?
That's great. Yeah, we are addressing those.
We also have a fund that's built up over the years because we've been not spending, not taking the revenues that we have gotten from the lease payments into the general fund. So we have a lot of money to work with, to work on the building and also to stand up a an operation if we want to be a part of it. So.
Right.
But I think the likelihood of finding an independent movie operator right now for the next year is as far as a movie company. So I think there are people that are interested operating in not one of the big chains. But so I think that's what most likely what we're going to be looking at, something a different kind of model. Okay, we move on to energy purchase. I think this is Bill also.
Uh, yes, so um, this is something of the practice we started several years back. Due to the ever-changing world and the commodity markets, trying to buy energy for the town. And since the last time we had approval to move forward with doing our purchasing, things have changed a little bit, market, one, and the volatility of things. And also the original approval was did not cover the electricity nor the natural gas that we're working on, trying to get our arms around and seeing how the best way to secure that commodity. Where we're coming around to almost having a year of data on some of our locations. So once we have that one year of data, it's we need at least that to get an idea of what we can hedge or not. Obviously, the one in getting a position where we purchase too much future in the gas gas world. And so primarily, we're just looking for the approval the for the upon. Basically, what I do is I'll get all the numbers together, present it to the Director of Public Works for a selectman and CFO as we're going through the purchasing that of that moment, that day. And then if it's a, they're all, it was an agreement, that's a good number, move forward, we will then execute the agreement. What are we within very quick time after receiving the numbers? In some incidences, we are able to still do some traditional bidding on some of these commodities through consortium, through CROG, an organization we're a member of, which we just utilized, to be honest with you, with gasoline. And it's, and that's really just based off the daily market rate, whether it be, you know, a few pennies over the the market for delivery, or we can do a fixed pricing, and we've always liked fixed pricing because in the past, we've definitely got hurt with trying to do off-the-rack pricing. You have no control over what that market does. At least if we fix price, we can buy a volume for the year, and we we tend to do better that way. So and that's within this recent one for gasoline. We just did that last week. And so we locked in. So I don't know what questions you may have, but.
So so so, Bill, I mean, I guess you know, it certainly makes sense to me. I'm just questioning, what does the revised, how does a revised resolution differ from the original two thousand and seventeen so-called on-the-spot resolution? Are you just incorporating additional energy? Are you just incorporating additional energy sources? Or what did, what did the 2017 resolution say? How does this differ?
Well, yeah, the only difference is I'm adding the Director of Public Works as an approver here. And then we're also adding the other commodities of the natural gas and electricity to the authorization. You know, what I, when we.
It looks, it looks like the 17 resolution required the approval of the first electman, CFO and the Director of Public Works.
Well, I guess we read it was kind of subjective because it says that Public Works would, you know, along with the other two personnel approve it. And I think what Tiger kicks around a bit, since I, I'm knowing it's actually, even though I'm a part of Public Works, I'm a sub-department. I get all the stuff together, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. I don't go no further than to the Director of Public Works first, when I get all these numbers. And as long as Tiger approves that this is the way to go, then we'll take the other two. I just wanted to make sure, make it clear. It didn't sound clear enough before, put it that way, that there was two people involved in Public Works there. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that's all.
That's fine.
Kathleen, any questions? So we're approving a resolution authorizing Public Works and first selectman and the chief of national office to purchase fuels as listed on a, on a extended contract basis. Do I have a second? I move that we adopt that resolution? For the discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Next item is a rather standard thing, the IRS changes their reimbursement rate for travel.
You approve this every year. This is just based on the IRS, that's the rate. So this is just something we need to approve as part of the, or selectman process.
So I move, we approve the request to adjust the mileage reimbursement for town business effective January 1st from 57.5 cents down to 56 cents per mile in accordance with IRS regulations, I guess. Do I have a second? Discussion? All in favor? unanimous? Legal fees on the tablets? Any questions?
But Kevin, what was the $5,000 for animal control?
That's to, on the puppies. We had to go into court, actually, I think there's another hearing this week.
Yeah.
Nick Boboni's been to court several times and in order to protect the, the animals and we had to go to court. Kathleen, any questions? I move we approve the legal fees.
Also, on the, on the God's, God's acre platform, there's a, there's a, an $8,300 charge to, what, what's, what's the nature of that?
Well, you know, we've been researching, Nick, and I've encouraged both you and Kathleen to talk to the town attorney.
Yeah, I'm actually, the year, the fiscal year to date is $16,000. So I'm just, this was wondering.
I would encourage you to talk to the town attorney as Kathleen has. I've moved, we approved the legal fees on the tablets.
Second here.
Discussion, all in favor? That's unanimous. Tax overpayments, I think there's one real estate tax overpayment to approve. I move we approve that. Reimbursement? Or refund, I guess, refund.
Second here.
Discussion, all in favor? It's unanimous. That brings us to selectman's comments. So I will make an update tonight on the COVID since last week. We're again essentially seeing college-age residents and their parents or their middle-aged parents and families transmitting and very few seniors, although unfortunately, we have our first death from COVID for 79-year-old resident living at home since last August. So that's, we extend their sympathies to the family. And so COVID is still very much with us and it remains to be seen whether we're going to see this spike in January that is being seen in other parts of the country and certainly other parts of the world. And the state of Connecticut, you know, when we do our testing at Wavening, which is going back to six days a week now that we'd be on the holidays. We believe that that testing is more representative of our positivity rate than the state's numbers because the state unfortunately is lumping into their statistics, all of the testing that's being done at the senior facilities. And, and since most people test negative, both the employees and the residents, it's really kind of skewing this, we believe the state results and was skewing our results when we were taking the state data. So I think our, our positivity rate seems to be in the three to four percent range and the state seems to be in the seven to six to seven to, although there's a spike in the state rates. So, but we're doing better than most of the rest of the nation and New Canaan is doing better than the state overall. So I think, but I don't know what to expect in the next few weeks. So any questions about COVID? I think the, I would mention the, because of the schools being remote this week and in order to go back next week in-person learning, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday test dates this week are being reserved for students only. The superintendent is doing testing of all his teachers and staff and administrators that wish to be tested so they can feel confident going back next Monday. Hopefully, the results will, will bear that out. And, but we will return to six-day-a-week testing next week, Monday through Saturday. And the, the, the link for the sign of genius will be in tonight's email and call-up for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then we will next Tuesday announce Thursday, Friday, Saturday link. So this testing at Wavening has been very beneficial for the town to be able to get convenient scheduled testing. And I think otherwise vaccinations, they're, they're still working on the first phase of seniors and in facilities, senior facilities and also the first responders. And the state, I don't believe, has announced their next stage for vaccinations. But it should be coming soon because I think the first responders will be done relatively soon. I don't know how long Kathleen, the senior facilities are going to take, but they're like, there's like 300,000 seniors and facilities around the state, so.
Right, well, it has expanded. The first phase was nursing homes and now we're, and that's, we're actually going into the second phase of that for this week. So the second shot, if you will, second vaccine. And we're also now expanding to our, the dementia care and the inn. So that's going to also start next week. So that's expanding, basically covering our healthcare workers and our residents of the two other facilities.
So Kathleen, you've got, that'll be done, first shot, second shot, the next two weeks?
Well, starting the first shot with, for our residents of the inn and the village next week. So then another, another three, three weeks after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
I, I would like to note to Kathleen, she's chairman of the board of Wavy Care Center. And first of all, I'd like to thank Wavy Care Center for what they've done with the testing. West Barksdale's done a tremendous service for the town. And also congratulate Kathleen, I'm concluding her merger last week with Visiting Nurses Association, which was founded in New Canaan. And I think it's about double the size of your organization, right? From 500 employees to about 1,000 or?
No, no. It's, we have 500 employees who are adding another 160. Yeah.
But, but you also got a big new endowment as part of the package. So interestingly enough, the visiting nurses in Wilton are the school nurses for the town of Wilton. So it's, it's, it's quite, quite an organization now that we can have more resources to work with. And so I want to congratulate Kathleen, that was a tremendous transaction to get accomplished in a very short, very time.
Well, thank you. It's, it is expanding our footprint throughout Fairfield County, particularly in home healthcare. And it's adding a service in our continuum that we haven't had directly and that's with hospice care. So we're really filling out all of the services that we're providing to our community throughout Fairfield County. So we're very excited about that. And then one other thing, Kevin, that is part of this acquisition affiliation is that the visiting nurse also has owned for many years now the thrift shop on Locust Avenue. So we're, we're excited about that as well.
That's great.
So I don't think I have anything else. I'm going to take a few days off, I'm going to do the call-out tonight. And I haven't been away since March and I think I need a little break. So otherwise Kathleen and Nick, do you have any comments you want to make?
Enjoy your time off, you deserve it, Kevin. Just, well, I, I think Linda's still on. And Linda, could you just update me on the research that you were doing with respect to the establishment of a special project fund to support the animal control center, wherever it is and whatever, wherever and what, you know, whatever it is in terms of going forward?
Actually, before Linda speaks to that, Nick, let me mention that I'm investigating with the Parks and Recreation Commission the possibility of, of using the house at Quanis. And I think we'll have that discussion as part of our budget discussions coming up in the next couple of weeks as to whether that makes more sense. You know, the Y MCA did use it last summer. And we're also in discussions with the Y about possibly having a public-private partnership with respect to the operation of Quanis during the summer. So I think the, I think the Parks and Recreation Commission has scheduled a special meeting for Thursday night to discuss Quanis and I think we're going to have some decisions.
I think that's terrific. I think it's terrific proactive. I just, I just, the simple question that I had for Linda was, because we had talked about this some weeks ago, is, you know, we've still got people who want to contribute dollars to the town to be used to support whatever we do with the animal control center, whether we leave it in place and refurbish it or we move it or whatever. And I just, I just, a very simple question is, you know, how, how can people donate money that they want to donate?
Basically, they would do the same way that they're doing now. We would, we would have to create that because we don't have a, a project account. So we would probably bring it, I have to check the charter. I believe it's the, I believe it's you, it's the Board of Selectmen that sets those up. So we would essentially create a project which would allow us to create the account and, and put the money in a designated location. And then when, and we'll go through the, the regular purchasing process if we're going to build something and whatnot. And we would identify that as the source, the same way we do, you know, funds donated for the food pantry as an example.
Right, or the ice rink. I mean, we.
Oh, the ice rink, yes.
A fund for years, you know, for an amorphous ice rink that it wasn't clear exactly whether it would go forward or where it would be. And ultimately, as, as I think you may remember, we, as a Board of Selectmen, voted to disperse those funds to purchase certain ice rinks. So that's great news, Linda, thank you. Maybe, maybe we can do, is this something we need to vote on as a Board of Selectmen?
Nick, let me, let me clarify though. First of all, you know, anybody can donate for a purpose to the town and people do it all the time. They donate to the ambulance corps, they donate to the human services department, they donate to the and, and they get a tax deduction because it's for a public purpose. I don't know that we feel we need any funds right now to do any work on the current animal shelter because Tucker's visited it, I visited it. On the other hand, if we do create a capital project with respect to the Quanis House, only the town council can approve a capital project. And if we built, if we want to build a fund for that capital project, that would be something we'd bring to the town council and create the capital project. And then funding from the public could be set up in a, in a project fund for that, for that capital project. So again, I, we have to make a decision as to whether or not we need to make a change before we commit the Quanis House to the YMCA for their summer use, which would be really an eight-week or 10-week use in the summertime. It's a house that could be converted into a animal shelter, have the benefit of having an outdoor run, which would make a lot of sense. Tiger and, Tiger, who else has looked at that in terms of Joe and?
Walk out there with Allison as well.
So, so the question is, you know, I think by the end of January, as part of our Board of Selectmen budget, we're going to have to make a, make a decision. Do we want to recommend that we not let the YMCA use that house in the summer as part of their camp? Or do we want to take it back over as a animal shelter? And, you know, we'll probably, I don't know, $50,000 or something is probably going to be required to repurpose that house as an animal shelter. So that's a decision the Board of Selectmen will make in January with the Parks and Recreation Commission advising. And then, you know, if it's a funding matter, which I think it's probably going to require both public funding and volunteer donor funding, we will bring that to the Board of Finance and to the town council as part of the budget process. We frozen?
You're good.
So we're working on budgets. You know, the budget's going to be scrubbed this week to make sure the numbers that you get by next Thursday are correct. And we don't have any mistakes or things we need to budget for and.
Are those materials all electronic or are there budget books that we'll receive?
I don't know, Linda, how do you, you plan to issue a budget book for the selectman or?
I do, it won't be the, the full book, but you'll have the schedules, the, the line item detail, similar to what we sent out last year. We typically send you a copy and, yeah, electronically and, and in paper. Because a lot of departments have provided backups for various projects and whatnot. So those would also be included. We're also going to include fee memos that we're asking departments to put together. So all of that will be part of the review packet that you get.
Yeah, do we feel, do we need paper, though? You know, we, we, the budget books tend to be a lot of expenditure for paper that. Do you want paper?
If it's electronic and I need something to write on, I'll, I can print it out at home, it's not a problem.
Great.
I know the Board of Ed spends quite a bit of money to produce their budget books in, in paper. I, I just wonder if it's a worthwhile expense given given the ability to work with electronic documents now.
Let's go green.
I'd like to try, I'd like to try as much as possible to avoid producing paper budget books, Linda.
Okay.
At least, you know, let's, the Board of Finance can make their own decision, but at least what we work with and approve and send out. And then the town council can decide, but I think the, the, it's a lot of paper for not much benefit.
So the first meeting being on the 19th, then, when will we see the electronic budget book?
By next Thursday, I think it's the schedule. I'm going to work next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday with Linda and. I think it's quite a job to pull together all the, all the numbers, all the estimates. And so do you have any further comments you'd like to make? Either one of you?
Just enjoy your time.
Thank you, I lost track of time here, it's 9:19. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe.